All right, can tell us any order? Please stand for the white.
United States of America and the Republic of America. For which stands one nation, united in the soul of the great nation.
We are going to start with a presentation by Mrs. Feldman about the solar wind farm.
So the district has been approached by Shelby Wind for proposed pilot or an educational contribution. And we're going to discuss what those are and what they mean to the district. We're going to start talking about the definition of a pilot. The pilot's impact on New York State tax cap calculation. The district's role in the solar farm process and a pilot versus an educational contribution. So what is a pilot? It's a payment in lieu of taxes or an arrangement between the district and a startup business or entity. It reduces the tax assessed value of an entity, usually for 15 years, slowly bringing the business fully onto the tax rolls at the end in order to allow the business an opportunity to gain footing and improve their business strategies. So a pilot impacts the New York State tax cap. It reduces the amount of taxes that can be levied to the general public. Year one, the impact is 100% of the pilot received. Subsequent years is the change in the pilot. And when the pilot is moved to the tax roll, it has a negative effect on the tax cap calculation. So Shelby Wind is requesting a pilot with the Eden School District. This one I want to go over slowly. Can the school district prevent the solar farm by denying the pilot? The answer is no. We can only control the funds the district will receive. I want to repeat that so that everybody hears that. The district cannot prevent a solar farm by denying a pilot. We have no control over whether or not a solar farm comes to Eden. So the only thing we can control is the amount of funds that the district will receive for tax money. The location for the solar farm is going to be at 7501 Sisson Highway. So Hudson Russ has been negotiating with Shelby Wind on behalf of the district. They're offering two options to us, a traditional pilot or an educational contribution slash high pilot hybrid. So in a traditional pilot, each year, the assessed value increases a little bit each year till it's to full tax assessed value. So the contribution we would receive under a traditional pilot over 15 years is approximately $262,000. So under an educational contribution agreement, the annual pilot would be $500 a year times 15 years, $7,500 and a one-time educational contribution of $209,841. There would be no tax cap implication, so there would be no fluctuation as a pilot comes in and leaves the tax cap calculation. So the total educational contribution agreement would be $217,341. Now I want to go back to this and say, if we received a traditional pilot, we would expect to receive $262,000, which is $44,000 more than the educational contribution. And the reason for that is there's a formula run, the present value of an annuity stating that in today's dollars at $262 is actually only worth $217,000. So if, in essence, we would be receiving the same amount of money because there's more buying power today than there will be at the end of the pilot. So what is the impact for a traditional pilot for each homeowner? Two cents per $1,000 of assessed value or $2 savings on a $100,000 home. So what you're going to be asked to discuss and make a decision on later in the agenda is how do you want to proceed with the pilot or an educational contribution? So that will be a discussion that will be held when that is brought up in the agenda.
Yeah, it'll be in section 70, so we'll discuss that then. Thank you, Mrs. Feldman.
Mrs. Maxson is going to present her special education update.
Good evening. The Pupil Personnel Service budget development and updates are what's going to be included and discussed tonight. What we did is we looked at the three different board goals. I won't read through each of the slides that indicates our board goals for the district, but I did use that as an overlay slide for each of the different goals ahead of what I will discuss this evening. So the first goal is the student achievement goal. And what I'd like to first focus on is just an update, which I've been doing annually around the trends, the projections.
Our speaker's a little bit off. I'm going to ask you to move that microphone closer to you so we can, we can hear all the wonderful things you're going to share. Give it a test and I'll let you know.
Test?
That's better. Thank you.
Okay. Um, so first I will talk about the trends, projections and the CSE numbers of identification of students with disabilities. So this is an update that I give to you annually. So we'll just look at that first. The number of identified students through CSE, the trends from 2018, 19 each year moving forward. So you can see this year, right now, we are at 223 students. And I actually did something a little bit different this year with comparing our data and I used our numbers through New York State Department of Education, our annual reporting, because my budget and presentation happens at different times throughout the year. So I was looking at a point that I could look at where our numbers would always remain the same. And it's by pulling that, it's called a bed stay snapshot. So in October, we have what's called bed stay. So I'm always using the same data moving forward so that we always have the same comparison point. So if you ever were to compare it to our presentations from previous years, they may be a little bit of fluctuation in numbers. And that would be why, because we did it based on whenever my presentation fell, but for consistency purposes, so that we're always looking at the same numbers relative to the same point in time, we'll, moving forward, be always looking at that bed stay snapshot. So aligned to our first goal is looking at what are our goals as a department and what are our action steps? So we've been meeting as a department, as a special education department throughout the district, K to 12, and we've been talking about the review of the audit process as well as what we're doing within our district to help to support our students and really attain the goals that are set forward. So the first thing we're doing is working to increase reading fluency and proficiency. And we're using Orton Gillingham. It is a reading and writing approach that is multi-sensory and systematic and structured. And all of our teachers who are using this right now have been to training either in the past or we've been able to get them caught up on training over the past two years. We are also using another research-based program called Hagerty, particularly at our GLP building, but we do have spots of it at other places in the district where our students have greater gaps and deficits around decoding. So really that process of learning to read and putting together letter sounds to make words. ERLA is a tier one service that all students get and we continue to use ERLA and support our students in that. And then one of the things we've learned about over the past two years that I've been sharing with you is our work through the unique learning system. And this really targets all areas across the content areas and it's differentiated standards-aligned content and that's going really, really well. So I appreciate your continued support in that. It was a great investment for us and it helped us to get that vertical alignment for our self-contained classrooms. And then for increasing math fluency and achievement, iReady Math has been onboarded this school year. So our students are using that and it's a great approach to allow for differentiated individualized learning and assessment. From the iReady Math, there's the MyPath, and I'm sure that you've heard about this as well from GLP and EE, but I'm just wanting to emphasize how important it is for that personalized instruction, particularly for students who have special needs and may have gaps in their learning. From there, we also have the Ready Toolbox that we're accessing and utilizing. It's a digital resource library and it allows our teachers to really look at individualized support, small group instruction and whole group support through research-based resources. And then again, as I shared, the unique learning system we're using there as well and math. Goal two is diversity, equity and inclusion. And so here I will just go over again, some of that historical data and just update everybody on where we're at as far as our classification makeup of our population of students with disabilities. So you can see that in the blue is where we are currently this year in our trends. Our OHI or Other Health Impaired number has gone down by about 10, but you will see that we have a pretty swift increase in the speech and language impairment. So this trend I don't anticipate probably changing a whole lot over the next couple of years. I think that there's a few reasons for that, one of which is COVID, one of which we have been seeing a rise and an increase in speech and language. And then also recently, there's a more difficult opportunity for us to gain access to services through the county as more and more students need or our younger learners need more services. There are less opportunities for them to access that. So we're continuing to work and provide support to our students. We've been very creative in allowing them to receive services in our district with providers coming into the district to provide services, which has opened up more services for the students of Eden. But that is a number I don't anticipate changing a whole lot. I did delve into the data a little bit more to see what age levels our students who have this classification are. And for the most part, they are our youngest of learners. 19 of the students make up the birth year of 2017 and 11 students make up the birth year of 2016. And then all of the students who fall in this category are below 10 for the other age levels. So with the youngest or the oldest actually being a 2012 baby. And then our goals and action steps are to continue to increase inclusivity through a culture of care, again, going back to the whole DEI and really looking at how do we continue to support our students? And we're using second step, which is a whole child social emotional learning curriculum that is provided through classroom-based interventions. So Shannon Hennigan Fitzgerald is the counselor that pushes into classrooms and provides those lessons in the classroom. And then character education, so supporting those core values and skills. It looks a little bit different between buildings, but at the GLP and EE. And then second step has also been recently introduced over the past two years to the middle school as well. And Scott Mitten provides those lessons. Panorama is the research-based students survey system that really analyzes that social emotional learning and then can provide data and interventions and supports for our students. We're really just delving into that this year, but it's a self-report survey system that allows students to self-report and then we'll be able to dive into that data and help to support our students, which is also helping to navigate which of our students need to go through that MTSS system through the referral process and potentially receive services through our behavioral support interventionist, our counselors and potentially through our social workers. And then the last item that we're really looking at, it's in its infancy stages, but we're very excited about this work here. And this is really stemmed more out of both audit and through conversations among our department. It's just to continue to create opportunities for additional structured learning labs. So we're working to collaboratively define the procedures for the structured learning lab for our students to just increase access for our students, especially in the middle school and high school, to maybe have the opportunity to have a special education teacher as the learning lab provider. And they'll be able to go through things like an agenda for the day, organization, helping them get their materials and resources in place, homework support, help with essays, graphic writing and organizers and such. But we're looking to create more of those types of opportunities so that way we can open up the continuum away from only resource room right now, where they have only an opportunity for resource room or for a traditional study hall or some learning labs, but to actually have a special education teacher available for some structured learning labs. And the final goal is finances and facilities. And here we're just looking to continue to ensure fiscal responsibility while maintaining high-quality programming and services. We continue to partner with Medicaid for reimbursement and with MAG for our high-cost students. And then we're continuing with our technology-based platforms and we continue to monitor the use of those programs or effectiveness and student need. And any questions?
Can I, can I ask a question? What is intellectual disability?
So an intellectual disability, in the past, if you rewind time many years ago, it would have been referred to as
That's me.
It would have been referred to as MR or mental retardation. The same with, you'll notice that emotional disturbance this past year was also renamed to emotional disability. So being more sensitive and inclusive to individuals with special needs with terms that aren't maybe as negative or have a negative connotation. Great question.
I'm ending my 36-year career, so that slipped by me. Thanks.
No worries. Thank you.
So Mary, you, you mentioned that I believe in age range for the speech-language impairment from about five to 10 years old.
Yes.
You said, so, so that's, that's appropriate, correct? And you know, we would be, we would have to take a hard look if we still had students who were 14, 15, 16
Right.
Still receiving that service because we know the effective, effectiveness is at the youngest age levels for, for that particular impairment. And that you're expecting that trend to continue or to stay at that, at that high number?
I do, at this time. I think with the way that our, our trends have been going and just seeing our students coming in, watching their testing, I chair all the CPSC meetings. So just reading the evaluations, listening to our parents, supporting them, I do think that's going to continue. And unfortunately, a lot of agencies right now have zero availability. So some of our students actually qualify for programming and services in an agency setting and some of the waitlists are legitimately, like I'm not exaggerating this number, but 109 students on a waiting list.
And that, that's beyond just the, the speech-language assistance. That's, that's any type of programming for children who need a different setting. So, so knowing that that issue is going to continue because 109 student waiting list doesn't disappear overnight.
Right.
We need to take a hard look at what we can do internally.
Right. So early intervention is the best intervention and we've been trying as much as we can to continue to afford opportunities here in the district and having further discussions about how we can continue to open up those services here because they're not going away. And the better that we can support students before they get to us, the better it will be for them.
So just to build on what Jeff said, Mary, when you said that the opportunities at the county level are limited, is it because there's a lack of availability or, or are you seeing the county push back on?
The county doesn't push back at all. Actually, right now, I think it's the number of students, number of needs and availability of therapists. And a lot of us are seeing increased needs around some of these areas, whether it's speech, speech and OT are the two that we're seeing. To be honest with you, since I've been in the district and trying to seek social work support, we have been very unsuccessful for our youngest individuals that get CPSC services. We pretty much are always unsuccessful in getting social work services because there aren't providers out there providing, see it services are minimal. We do have most of our students serviced at this point, but it is always very difficult to secure that. We're not alone. I'm actually in a discussion with seven other local districts. We're trying to be creative and think about ways that we can support each other around one another because they're all experiencing the same thing as well. And then speech hadn't been too bad until this year. This year we do have kids on a waiting list and OT as well. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Have a good evening.
Is there a request to withdraw specific items from the consent agenda? Okay. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, consensus items be approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstaining? I will be abstaining from this vote. Any opposed? Motion carried.
So this is the approximate position and time that the board has designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements, then respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required to sign the attendance sheet and designate their representation status. For example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a two-minute time limit.
Okay. Hello? Hi. My name is Linda Haslett. I am a parent of two students at the high school. My daughter Lexi in attendance. And we are wanting to know the school's position on the possibility of holding a snowmobile ride day in conjunction with the Winter Fest that would be occurring in Eden with the Legion. I've been in talks with Mr. Scuse from the local snowmobile club. And during Winter Fest, they host a trail ride for people that have never been on snowmobiles before to ride a loop that goes along the Legion post area field and it backs up right along the snowmobile or the, sorry, snowmobile, the softball fields. So it will already be cleared. We'd be doing it that weekend, assuming there's snow, of course, and looking to have the students be able to ride their sleds like all of, most of the other schools in the area, North Collins, Springville, Pioneer Arcade, they all have a day very similar. And we're just looking to see if there's something that can be done. Snowmobiles have to be registered and insured. The kids of 10 and up have to have a license to be able to ride. If they're between 10 and 13, they have to be within 500 feet of an adult over, I'm sorry, not an adult, a rider over the age of 18. 14 and up is allowed to ride on their own. So at this time, we are simply asking for high school students to be able to do this. It could be something where the SRO officer or the police could also be there to check the sleds, make sure they're registered, make sure they're insured, they're abiding by all the rules. We feel it's not any different than allowing a teen driver as they are, have to be licensed, registered and insured. So the same rules would apply. And we're just looking to see if it's something that can be looked upon.
Just for clarification, are you asking for students to be able to ride their sleds during Winter Fest?
During that particular weekend, when the trail is already going to be accessible from the Legion to the school.
Okay. I, I need more clarification. I'm sorry.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm going to ask that you make sure you leave your contact information at the back so I, so I can get in contact with you.
Absolutely.
And just, just to be clear.
Yeah.
This is the opportunity for the board to hear
Correct.
From you and, and not to give you an immediate response.
Correct.
So, but you'll get one.
Okay.
So Winter Fest is, is organized by the Eden Town Recreation Department.
Correct.
They do utilize our facilities. And I, I am aware of the different activities that, that are planned or proposed to be planned at this point. We don't have any influence on those activities or who participates in those activities. So I just want you to be aware of that at the, at this point.
Understood.
Okay.
So are you asking to basically ride on school property?
Well, I'm asking for two things, I guess. Is it a possibility to be able to have the school partake in a snowmobile ride day? When I have asked principals before, I asked Mr. Lyons last year, I asked Mr. McDonough this year, I think I even possibly emailed you, Mr. Surtizio as well, and I was told there was a legal concern. But when I asked, it spanned on a legal concern, I was never responded to. So my question is, if they're not going to be allowed to take them directly on school property, why?
Okay. So, so just to clarify further, like drive your tractor to school day would be drive your snowmobile to school day?
Correct.
Is that, that's what you're
Correct. Something similar to that effect. Yes.
Is this above and beyond Winter Fest that you're asking about or just for the weekend?
I'm using that weekend as the guide because my understanding is there is no direct trail access that Eden has available to gain to the school. So this would be the closest that would be there. And traditionally, my understanding is that mark or that loop from the Legion is not accessible at any other time of the year except Winter Fest. So because of the fact it's open and it takes them within very close proximity, in my understanding, it's directly on the other side of the fence with, of where the softball fields are, and there is an opening in the fence, I was told already. So if we are allowed to do it during that weekend, if it's possible to have maybe a simple path for the students to be able to truck through the snow. I believe Mr. Ceramack and possibly Ms. Porter are also, don't quote me on this, onboard for the kids to be able to leave their gear, their boots, their helmets, their jackets if they don't fit in the lockers in their rooms.
Pardon? I don't know. I don't know.
I'm not 100% on that. I was told that that's a possibility. But if not, then could there be some kind of special agreement if we're similar to the tractors of allowing the kids to be able to bring the snowmobiles in, park them, leave them, and then continue on either after the buses have gone, if you want them to leave before the buses are gone, however that might work out.
When is Winter Fest?
I'm sorry.
I believe it's the first weekend in February.
February.
Yeah. So it runs like Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Winter Fest. So basically like drive your tractor to work day, you would want Friday, the school day to be, let these kids come, drive their snowmobiles. And then after school, then they could become part of the activities for Winter
Possibly. If there, if there are something or they can just disperse and go home. Correct.
So thank you for the clarification. I definitely know which way I need to look right now.
Okay.
Again, make sure we have your contact information or you can email Mr. McDonough and, or email me directly again. I apologize if I didn't get back to you previously. And there are some other entities that, that this, this may be bigger than just a district decision. There are some other entities that we would need to touch base with to see if this is a possibility.
Okay. Okay. I do have in contact information for you as well from Pioneer and Springville Schools with the teachers that coordinate that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anybody else?
Anybody else?
And to new business, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of Assistant Treasurer Amanda Carney be accepted effective December 9th, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of school nurse Catherine Kaler be accepted effective December 2nd, 2022. Note Catherine's resignation was approved at the October 12th, 2022 board meeting. However, the effective date had not yet been determined.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of lunch monitor Frances Phillips be accepted effective November 29th, 2022. Note, Mrs. Phillips will continue her employment as a bus attendant for the district.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Okay. Appointments, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, William O'Hare be granted tenure as a health physical education teacher effective January 26th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Congratulations, Bill.
All right. Good.
Wouldn't take effect until January though.
We'll just remember that applause.
Just don't get thrown on any basketball games, okay?
Okay. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing her probationary period, Amy Sullivan be granted tenure as an elementary teacher effective January 20th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Amy's out there, too.
Congratulations, Amy.
Congratulations.
And upon the recommendation of the superintendent, after successfully completing his probationary period, David Camillo be permanently appointed as a bus driver effective January 17th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the hours of teacher aide Kathy Franklin be increased from 6.75 to eight hours per day.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Elizabeth Hawkins be appointed on probation as a cleaner effective November 28th, 2022, and ending May 27th, 2023. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level two, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kelsey Baylen, who is initially certified in childhood education one through six, be appointed as a long-term substitute teacher effective January 3rd, 2023, through June 30th, 2023. Salary is based upon bachelor's, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Paul Harms be appointed on probation as a bus driver effective December 5th, 2022, and ending June 4th, 2023. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level nine, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Cassandra Keller Toth be appointed on probation as a teacher aide effective December 22nd, 2022, and ending June 21st, 2023. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level four, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Kelsey Carson be appointed on probation as a cleaner effective Jan-, December 22nd, 2022, and ending June 21st, 2023. Salary is based upon CSEA contract level two, step one.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, 100 copies of domain books that came in amplify kits be declared accessed and disposed of as the district deems appropriate.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the hourly rate for home instruction be increased from $28 to $40 per hour effective December 22nd, 2022.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just as a point of clarification, uh, this brings the home instruction rate in, in line with those other rates that are listed in the ETA contract. This is just simply not in the contracts. We wanted to make it equitable.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, capital improvement project. Miss on my screen here. Let me see. Be awarded as follows. Contract number 201, site work to Lewis Del Prince and Suns Incorporated. Base bid $927,000. Alternate four, Eden Elementary Tennis Courts, $199,000. Alternate 11, middle high school perimeter fencing, $35,000. Alternate 12, middle high school tennis court. Full depth replacement, $684,000. Total forward, $1,845,000. Contract number 202, general trades to RB Mac Construction Company. Base bid $862,500. Alternate 14, middle high school sports complex entrance, $65,500. Total forward, $928,000. Contract number 203, plumbing to Mullenberg Bets Incorporated. Base bid $79,700. Alternate nine, middle high school domestic water heater replacement, $99,000. Alternate 10, middle high school pool heater replacement, $63,845. Total forward, $242,545. Contract 204, mechanical HVAC to MLP Mechanical and Plumbing, Inc. Base bid $668,500. Total forward, $668,500. Contract 205, electrical to CIR Electrical Construction Corporation. Base bid $294,940. Alternate five, Eden Elementary Library Lighting, $37,000. Alternate nine, middle high school domestic water heater replacement, $3,700. Alternate 10, middle high school pool heater replacement, $1,200. Alternate 12, middle high school tennis court full depth replacement, $8,000. Alternate 14, middle high school sports complex entrance, $8,500. Total forward, $353,340.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion?
No.
We all good?
Yep.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
And upon the recommendation of the superintendent, bus routes be adjusted as per the attached spreadsheet.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstained? Any opposed? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, either an educational contribution or a pilot for a solar wind farm be, to be located at 7501 System Highway, be approved.
Second.
All right, we need to have some discussion on this.
Yeah, I want to, can I start with a question if you don't mind? So, Mrs. Feldman, you, you articulated the difference between a traditional pilot and the hybrid that's been offered to us. What, what is, if any, is the risk in the district selecting that the traditional pilot?
Well, if we select a traditional pilot and the entity does not last 15 years, we will not collect all of the funds.
So that, those funds aren't guaranteed, they're guaranteed in whatever year that they're still in business?
Correct.
Okay.
So, Mrs. Feldman, after the 15 years, the solar farm is still going. They come on the tax roll at that point in time. How are they then taxed?
I believe they're taxed on the kilowatt hours that they're generated, but I'm not positive.
Okay. That's what we thought, but... So, in 15 years, they will come on the tax roll, um, underneath the tax levy, and then it'll be based on how many megawatts that they're generating. And that's what will determine their tax rate at that point in time, so.
They'll determine their assessed value, which will have the normal tax rate applied at that point.
Correct, okay, yeah. So, question is, do we want to go with a traditional pilot and, you know, risk 15 years, whether they're going to be in business or not, or do we want to take all the money upfront? And the thought is, with the Finance Committee, which Jen and, and Jack and I sat on, was we could basically go with the contribution and then put that money into a reserve fund. So that's the guaranteed money. So we're going to put, I don't know what, $217,000 in our pocket, or $209,000 in our pocket within the next year or so. And then we could put that away in a reserve fund. You know, no different than, you know, what we had to do with the, um, the Cogen plant. You know, we could use it for mechanical reserves or something along those lines. That's to be determined. But the question is, do we want to go with the traditional pilot or the educational contribution? And the, um, Finance and Audit Committee basically chose the educational contribution. Is there anybody that wants to go with the traditional pilot? No? Okay, so can we modify that to the action to remove the traditional pilot? And go with the educational contribution?
So that, if I just read it, uh, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, uh, we would choose the educational contribution to be located.
Correct.
Just say that. At 7501 System Highway be approved.
Yep.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Motion carried.
Business report.
I know you're all excited and that you're going to have a hard time sleeping for the next month. But we start, we're kicking off the budget season. And in January's board meeting, we'll have the rollover budget. And I know how excited you all are, listen to me drone. Right now, staff is working on helping input the, um, budget pieces in that they are, you know, the, um, building principals and the department chairs on what needs they are going to have for the next school year, so we can start to do the budgeting.
Can't wait. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Uh, first, I'm, I'm going to talk a little bit about the construction project. This is, you know, it's become my, uh, my regular routine here. But to give you a bit of an update, um, I do have a lot of promising news. First off, the music suites at Eden Elementary are completed and occupied. Um, Don and I actually took a walk through this evening, and the board is welcome to do a walkthrough, uh, after this meeting as well. They came out very well. The, the flooring issues that we talked about previously have been rectified. The rooms are beautiful. Um, I, I had a great, um, moment this morning as some of our younger students were assertive, just by happenstance happened to tour the space on their own, and they were just, uh, really, really impressed with it. And I heard a lot of wow's from, from some of these young men. It was, it was a lot of fun. Uh, the middle school nurses' office and library are slated to be completed and fully operational when our students return from winter break. They have made some great progress in both of those areas. Uh, I do have a, a call into our construction management team, um, because I'd like some assurances that the, uh, schedule that we asked for is, is being committed to. Um, what you approve tonight in terms of those phase two projects is really, really exciting. Um, we are getting a ton of work done in phase two. Uh, that's because our bids came in, in favorably. There were a lot of alternates in phase two, and that was done strategically. Um, because the thought process was, once you have a contractor on campus, they're going to be committed and motivated to picking up some of that additional work. So we were aggressive in our, um, and how we constructed the, the, those, uh, those bids. And they came in very favorably. We have a ton of work that's going to be happening in our campus this summer. Let's not forget that still in phase one are all the windows in this building, the main office in this building as well, eight classrooms here, the, um, the tennis courts, uh, the, uh, the tennis courts, the parking lot, there's be some sidewalk work, that's just here. That's just in Eden Elementary. GLP will have, um, the, the continuation of the, of the lighting replacement. The high school will, will hopefully, um, be switching over to the Cogen. You've got the, the full depth replacement of the tennis court, the entryway to the sports complex. There's some ceiling work that's going to be happening as well. So our campuses are going to be under construction from, you know, as early as possible in, in the spring, right until school starts again. The result of that is the assessability and the opportunity to use our campuses is really going to be limited. Okay? I have notified, uh, the Town Recreation Department that we simply can't be a partner this summer. And, you know, they understand that. They, I know this district's been through that before. Uh, we do plan to continue to maintain our, um, some of our own programs on, on campus. Although, you know, Mrs. Max and I need to talk about, um, the extended school year program and whether last year's, uh, travels to North Collins can be revisited or not. Okay? And also, once we get the final construction schedule, which should happen in the next month or so, I'm going to reach out to some of those folks who run, run Corn Fest to determine what, if anything, we can do to partner with them as well, you know, and that, that important community event. Any questions about that?
Um, just to clarify, the sports entrance is the outdoor entrance. So basically, the walkway up to, uh, the stadium area is what's being done. Um, there is talk of another sports entrance at the actual high school building. That's a separate project.
Yeah, that's, that's an interior, um, upgrade to the, to the design that, that is separate from the capital construction project. And that's, that's in the planning stages. When I say planning stages, there's a design that's being worked up, and then we're going to determine whether we can afford to do that or not. Correct. Um, I really had hoped that this building would be a wash in, in the colors of the season with that facade lighting that I keep talking about. And, and they, it will be, it's just not going to be this season. Because again, there's a delay. They had to rebuild some, some boards, and it's looking like mid-January. That's what they tell me now. I'll be happy when we get to flip a switch. Uh, so, anyway. Moving on, uh, earlier this week, I, I sent the board a copy of a, a letter, and you probably wondered what it, what it was about. And I have to tell you that on December 2nd, uh, Mrs. Carter and I received notification that the district has been awarded a $257,328 grant to expand our pre-kindergarten program. As a refresher, the board elected to expand our program to two half-day and two full-day, uh, pre-K classrooms the school year. The understanding at that time was that if we received the grant, we would, we would expand to four sections of full-day pre-K. I can't tell you how excited I am that we got this grant. Uh, it's incredible. The credit absolutely goes to Lauren Carter. She, she did the work. She has the expertise and she has the leadership in, in that building that I'm so appreciative of. Uh, and she's, she's an absolute champion for the merits of, of early childhood education. And we see those results at GLP every day. So our goal is to transition those two half-day programs to full day in early February. All right, so we've already posted for a, a pre-K teacher and an aide, which is a requirement. We will also have to, um, bring on a halftime physical education instructor um, because of the, the, the needs in, in that building. But again, this is all covered under the grant. It, you know, February may, may seem like an aggressive time rhyme, timeline, but it's also what we promised the public when, when we talked about this during the budget season. And, and really, when you think about our, our youngest children, they've, they'll have half a year and a half-day program. They're ready. You know, they've got the stamina built up. They understand the routine. The question always becomes, well, what if a parent wants their child to only be in a half-day program? They can pick them up. You know, we're, we won't have a separate half-day program, but if, if a parent wants their, wants their child to only be in, in school so till 11:00 AM, then they, they can come and get their child. And I, and I, actually, I've worked in that model in, in, in previous destinations as well. So, again, a special thanks to, to Lauren for her efforts. And we both are beyond excited that, that we get to bring full-day pre-kindergarten to, to the district en masse. And now, a disclaimer. The reason that you got that letter and the reason this was rolled out as the way it was is the letter I got was confidential. I did have a conversation with Mr. Sutton, which, which I swore him to absolute secrecy. And then, lo and behold, on Sunday, it was announced publicly by, by our governor. Now, I'm grateful for the support. I would have liked to give you all a heads up that this was coming. So, you know, good news, good news.
And I think we're the only Erie County School District that received it?
Yeah, there were eight schools that received it, uh, that, that received the grant. I have no idea how many applied. Uh, but if any of those, I, I know at least one other local school district has reached out to Lauren for, for some assistance, because there will be another round of funding. It's awesome. It's, it's, it, it was a goal that we set. It was, it was an aspirational goal that we set last year at budget time. I know that our community really supports early childhood education simply based on the number of people who voted, which was higher, higher than, than in many, many years and, and such a positive take as well. And it, it's critical. As I've said to you before, those foundational skills are necessary for future success. So if we have the opportunity and we have the, the financial support, we absolutely should do this.
How long is the grant good for?
It's annualized.
Nice.
I, exactly, right? Is this a one and done? No, no, there, no. And I, and again, that's, that's the shift that we're seeing now and the partnership between the state edu-, State Education Department and, and the government is understanding where, where funds really are needed. And, and some of the polit-, political issues that we experienced previously have, have started to fade away now. Well, they, they won't be gone forever. They won't be gone completely. But we're going to be happy with where we are right now. Right?
But I think this could too help Mary's, the issue Mary was talking about with the lack of support. I mean, it won't go all the way down to EI, but it'll at least help at the preschool level, because we could possibly even use our own therapists. And that, do we?
We know of school districts who use their own therapists as preschool providers.
Okay. Okay. Right? Mm-hmm. Gotcha. Perfect.
Did everyone catch that? So in a nutshell, there there is an opportunity for us to utilize our own staff and then charge back to the to the county. Right? That's a good paraphrase. You taught me, so thank you.
But the problem is finding staff, though, right, is what I'm understanding?
But it.
There's the opportunity, like right now, we have a part-time speech that we contracted. If we created a whole position for exam managers, speaking an example, like I've got over example, have a whole time staff member, they could potentially do our district students and the rest of their youth club, the CPSC students, that we feel to come back. We have a part-time quota on staff, if we made that individual whole time, we could build that accounting for the whole team. And the really cool thing that happens here right now is the therapist that we are utilizing here, so our quota that we currently have, she picks up as many Eden children as possible, she's doing it for agency. But she strategically picks up as many power kids as possible because they're going to be further than coming in at our endings. So first, taking other students from other districts, she picks up our students.
I like this plan, I'm excited.
Okay, I have one, two, two things left. I'm going to I'm going to skip over part of that report because we really covered it in in earnest right now. But the last time we we had a board meeting, I had to talk about snow days because there was a lot of chatter about a major storm on its way. And and here we are again. All right? And last time I said, you know, if if there's going to be a snow day, it will be the traditional old-fashioned variety, and I I maintain I maintain that that's that's what we'll look at. I do anticipate that if any decision is made to close school on on Friday, that it will it will happen in a timely fashion so that families can plan accordingly. And so you don't need to sleep with a spoon under your pillow or whatever else it is you do, that's not going to influence me, but, you know, stay stay tuned for that. And then finally, the last thing I'd like to wish wish the board and all of our guests and and the greater community a happy and healthy and rest restful holiday season.
Jeff, can I ask you a quick question? Because I've had a lot of parents ask, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but the snow days that we did take, they were, they didn't count against us, correct?
They didn't count against us, sure. So, to just to explain that further, school districts are required to have a hundred and eighty days of student attendance so that state aid is not affected. If you go less than a hundred and eighty days, then it's it's costing taxpayers money because we have to make up that those funds someplace. Since a state of emergency was called, those two snow days do not count against our against our allotment. So they're they're considered, they're essentially considered days of instruction.
So if there is a similar thing declared on Friday, would that then fall into the same classification?
Ostensibly, yes.
Okay.
Pardon?
They're calling it a bomb genesis that's coming on Friday.
Well, we'll see. I know Don Paul's already out there. I'm trying to give us some advice, so I'll take a look at that deeper when I get home.
Don Sutton gave you some advice the other day.
It's something about Don's that I don't listen to, but anyway, thank you. Let's move on now.
Okay, student report.
Hi, my name is Trey Amick. I'm the co-treasurer for the class of twenty twenty six, and I'm just going to do a quick rundown of what the student council has been up to for the school year of twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three. Um, back in October, we held our homecoming. It was a huge success. Everybody had a lot of fun. And the week leading up to homecoming, um, we had our pep rally and our spirit week, and everybody, again, had a lot of fun. There was hallway decorating. And then for the middle school, they held a Halloween dance around the same time, just to help them feel included since they cannot attend homecoming. Winter sports for JV and varsity started this Monday, and on the twenty eighth of November, modified sports will start. The musical had its auditions last week, Tuesday and Wednesday. Their first rehearsal was last week, and they're doing the musical Matilda. The food drive from November fourteenth to November twenty second was a huge success. We collected eight hundred and forty pounds of food and two hundred and forty two dollars in cash for the Eden North Collins Food Pantry. National Honor Society had its blanket drive, which started November twenty eighth and ended yesterday. We collected tons of blankets for people in need. We had our Toys for Tots fundraiser, which started December fifth and ended December sixteenth. We collected over a hundred and fifty toys for Tots, which was amazing. Um, December twenty third, on Friday, the last day before winter break, we are starting something new called Drop Everything and Celebrate. We're encouraging all teachers to have some sort of activity for the kids to participate in just because it's Christmas, and, you know, we want everybody to have a little bit of fun at school as well. We've also had students decorating ornaments for the local nursing homes, and everybody had tons of fun decorating them. Um, winter spirit week, which is being held this week, Monday was ugly Christmas sweater day. Tuesday was Christmas hats and socks. Wednesday was winter gear. Tomorrow is Christmas in July, and Friday is pajama day. Any questions?
Maybe everybody will just be in their pajamas Friday.
Enough of that. Hey, thank you, that was fantastic.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was a great report.
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Okay, board report roundtable. Well, I I will say something. I, on behalf of the Eden North Collins Food Pantry, I just want to commend the junior senior high student council on that food drive and the money that was really well appreciated, and not only you had it before Thanksgiving, but we rolled it over, we're still, you know, distributing food. The elementary and GLP collected gifts for our Christmas sharing. We were able to give Christmas presents to eighty-five families, and they helped out a lot. Some of those blankets that you donated actually made it to us, too, because through the Lutheran Church, and we distributed those to people to, and Lucy Heffernan, who's a freshman, I think, does her own food drive every year, and she raises her goal, personal goal, so she had an all-time all-time record this year, and she's going to keep doing it till she's a senior. So I am so proud of the students and the faculty and the staff at Eden who support us every year because you are helping members of our community who really cannot, I cannot tell you what it means to them because they are just overcome with gratitude and joy. And and it's really a credit to you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just wishing every.
So the Happy New Year.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. Same here. Merry Christmas to all of you. Let's do it. Okay, the next regular Board of Education meeting is Wednesday, January eighteenth, twenty twenty three, at seven PM in the Eden Elementary School Auditorium. And now, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
So exciting.
Thanks for coming, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.